Good evening, we will now call our October thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen, school board regular meeting, work meeting to get to order. We do have with us this evening Treasure Coast High School that's going to do a performance for us. I want to welcome everyone that's come this evening and also our viewing audience as well. We want to thank our principal there, Ms. Susan Seal, for bringing her group, as well as the director, Mr. Jones, I believe. Would you raise, would you stand up, Mr. Jones and Ms. Seal, so we can recognize both of you?[44.51][44.51][applause] They will do a special presentation, and we're so glad to have you with us this evening, directly after our pledge and our Kids at Hope Treasure Hunters pledge as well. Would you please stand with us?
[inaudible] Please remain standing as we recite the Kids at Hope Treasure Hunters pledge. As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. You may be seated, thank you.
I would like to remind our audience that if you have any, and you may come up as I'm talking, thank you. If you have any unspeaker that you would like to speak to us with, we will acknowledge you at a later date, but please fill out the forms and turn them over to Chris Harrison. At this time, I'm going to ask the board to sit in the audience.
Well, good morning. I would like to take a second to welcome you all, and thank you for this opportunity to be in this room today. It is, it's really, it's the most amazing feeling to be in this room right now, and I would like to take the opportunity to thank you all for allowing us to be here. It's, it's really such a pleasure to, to be in front of all of you guys today. But, we are all destined for greatness, and today is the day that we're going to show you our greatness in this destiny.[170.01][170.01][applause]
It goes back to when they doubted me, constantly lying, criticizing, but yet they're proud of me. I'm looking for assurance from anybody that smiles at me. It seems that I'm conceited, but I'm looking to be set free. They say, "You can be all you can be, just put your mind to it." I must admit, I can't commit. I feel I might lose it, so then I quit. Thoughts of being articulate, or if I speak, would my words ever be definite? Or could it be that I'm just destined? Like the rose that grew from concrete, I'm just another blessing. I was brought on this earth to succeed. No boundaries could retrieve nor deceive the light inside, they can't deprive in me. Once upon that sweet epiphany, I realized it was all within my destiny.
When you're young, you are destined for greatness. Everyone will be a witness to the sickness that bleeds, a mentality of a generation obsessed with vanity, molded by tragedy, preceded by our prisons and the religions we teach to our children. Success is a driven and addiction that spreads like prescriptions. Through the power of forgiveness, we can overcome illness, become fearless to the mass destruction governed by policies, apologies are measured by quality, not to mention equality is the heart of our society.
We are destined for greatness, the head of the generation. We are lions, but some of us are full of doubt, lack of ambitions, these cubs are roarless. Our skin is the armor provided, this is what we fight in, and some of us act as we, as if we're not fully equipped. Grab your friends, your family, and your children, because now is the time for listening. Nothing is given to anybody, especially not on a silver platter, but some of us went to be golden so bad as if what I just said doesn't matter. Parents, you cannot expect your children to be successful without the essentials. A constructor wouldn't invest in a building without the materials. You gave life for a better life. If you raise us right, we should get it right. My grandmother lived on her knees so that metal wouldn't touch the risks of me, not for one night. God said, "Bring us up in a way and we shall not depart." We may fall in sin, but he still knows our heart. God's words can never be soiled, so don't act as if your teachings and your children are water and oil. Trust me, it will mix and it will sink in, even though our actions are not always an accurate result of us listening. Keep on screaming, keep on taking away our phones, stay overprotective, keep on lecturing, never leave us alone. Always show your love, and we'll find our place, because all that frustration will turn into pride one day. Keep putting the work in, and it'll be more than well worth it, because we are destined for greatness, but parents, we weren't made perfect. And I know sometimes we will fall, and our lines man will get demained, but it will grow and restore. If you are our rock, there should be no reason why your children can't find their roar.[360.81][360.81][applause]
Thank you so much, that was so powerful. Give them another hand clap, please.[374.12][374.12][applause] You know what you just did? You just reconfirmed to all of us adults how important it is that we see that you're destined for greatness, and that we help you understand that you're destined for greatness. Thank you so much for coming, we appreciate it. I think this is so appropriate to go right into the vision after those young people have come before us today. They definitely inspired me, that they inspire everyone out there. Great.[442.81][442.81][applause] Come on, let's give them another hand, that was great. Our vision for St. Lucy County Schools, in partnership with parents and community, will become premier centers of knowledge that are organized around our students and the work we provide to them. Our name will be synonymous with the continuous improvement of student achievement and the success of each individual. Furthermore, we promise to move from good to great, focusing on our core business, the challenge, the creation of challenging, engaging, and satisfying work for every child, every At this time, I will open up our public hearing. We have before us the proposed adoption of amendment to school board policy three point seven zero three, and the adoption of job descriptions as rules. Board members, do you have any questions or comments on any of the proposed adoptions? Hearing none, is there any in the audience who would like to speak during this time regarding the public hearing items that will be presented? Okay, seeing none, come forward. Superintendent Gent, we will now receive your recommendations.
Recommend the board adopt the proposed amendments to the school board policy number three point seven oh three and the annual adoption of job descriptions as rules as presented.
We have the recommendation before us, board members. May I hear a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Ingersoll.
Second.
Second by Ms. Harley, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries five zero. We will conclude our public hearing at this time, and we will go right into our special order of business, and we have, at three of them, I believe, this evening, that we will turn this portion of the meeting over to Superintendent Gent.
Thank you. First off, I'm going to ask Dr. Judy Miller, she's the CEO of the Big Brothers Big Sisters, to present the awards for the teams who participated in the Bowl for Kids' Sake event.
Actually, I have Olivia Watkins, one of our board members, with me to do just that.
Good evening, Ms. Watkins.
Good evening. Madam Chair, to all of the board members, it's been a long time since I've been here doing this stuff. So if I don't do it just right, you all just, but this is really an honor to stand here today. We want to thank the entire St. Lucy County School District for your support for our annual Bowl for Kids' Sake fundraiser. And this year, we were very, very fortunate to have all of our schools participating, except one, and we're not calling any names, but we want to have a 100% participation at, on, on next year. So, and we want to really thank our new superintendent, Mr. Wayne Gent, who has returned back to us, and had a very nice visit with him, and he is really here to support us, and we are thankful for that. So at this time, we want to recognize our top winners for this year's Bowl for Kids' Sake. We had a lot of fun. We would like to call representatives from Morningside Elementary.[664.79][664.79][applause] If you all would, y'all just stay there, yes, just stay there, please. These are our top seven winners. Coming in in fourth place was Rivers Edge.[703.00][703.00][applause] Rivers Edge raised a total of one thousand fifteen dollars and forty cents.[712.04][712.04][applause] Our third place winner was Francis K. Sweet, one thousand three hundred and fifty-five And our second place winner was Alapata Flats, and they only beat F.K. Sweet by nine dollars.[738.82][738.82][laughter] Alapata Flats, only by nine dollars, that was close.[748.62][748.62][laughter] And our first place winner, repeat, 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 I don't, we, we've done three repeats, I don't know what number we're on now, for Floresta Elementary.[763.29][763.29][applause]
And Samara, you need to come up here.
And Samara Clancy has been our top winner, I can't even remember how many years, but she did spearhead it this year. She had someone else to take over, and-
Allison and Fred.
Allison and Fred, and they still bring it home to gold.[795.82][795.82][laughter]
Samara, can you hold it, because they have been a little precious. I'll sit there.
Oh, wow.
I, I don't know if we can get a picture of the audience. Yes. Okay. All right.[828.12][828.12][laughter] Anyone from Alapata Flats? All right. All right. Okay. I just, I wanted to say that this last week really took a while to do. I kind of think that-
Judy, can you please go to the mic?
Yes. I had a confer, a case manager sitting around the table who said that they'd been out to interview a little three, three, third grade child, and they were sitting there in one part of the interview, just to get to know the little girl, was to ask the question, "What do you like about yourself?" And the little girl sat there for a long time, and she said, "Nothing." And it really brought home to me how critical mentoring really is, because for all those kids out there that are facing adversity, that are facing struggles, having a mentor in a child's life who can be that other side of the mirror, who can reflect something different for them, the child that's really in them, is just a miracle, it's a real gift. And so I want to thank all of you who came out, my goodness, you know, thank goodness, nothing happens at the bowling alley that Saturday, because all of the school board would be gone. And you, you guys raised on your own over sixteen thousand dollars. The event with pledges and what was turned in raised over fifty, and that means you raised a third of, of the funds, which was just absolutely incredible. And I have a surprise announcement, which our superintendent confirmed, and that is that he's agreed to be the honorary chair for next year's Bowl for Kids' Sake twenty sixteen, so, oh, thank you again for everything.[988.62][988.62][applause]
Thank you, Dr. Miller, Miller, and Ms. Watkins, for all the work that you do with the, the organization, we appreciate that, and you did say ninety-nine percent of our schools participated. I think that might be a first time. I, gosh, that is, well, if it's not, then that's just incredible, again, and, and we thank each and every school in the district for being a part of it. Mr. Gent?
Yes, before going to the next one, we did have a great day. The little baby that you saw, I just wanted to announce that she outbowled Mr. Principal Hitzman from, from Weatherby by a significant margin. Secondly, we have Disability History and Awareness Week, which is the first two weeks of October, and I'd ask for Mr. Bill Thomason, our Executive Director of Student Services and Exceptional Student Education, to come forward.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Gent, it is my pleasure to inform you that October has been designated as Disability History and Awareness Month. It is important to note that in Florida, in the school year two thousand fourteen, fifteen, there were more than three hundred and fifty-seven thousand children with disabilities served in the K-12 school system. St. Lucy County Public Schools serves more than five thousand children with disabilities this year. And in honor of Disability History and Awareness Month, all of our schools this year have been actively engaged in promoting disability history and awareness through activities that are taking place at each of the schools. We are very pleased tonight to have several students here with us that will be reading the proclamation. We have members from Fort Pierce Central's organization, Best Buddies, and we also have a student from St. Lucy West Centennial that will be coming forward to read as well. At this time, I would like to ask that Evelyn Stover, the club sponsor from Fort Pierce Central, Jada Hill, the president of Best Buddies, and members Adelia Boykin, Cheyenne Quay, and George King, come forward, and also Kelsey Keebler from St. Lucy West Centennial.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Park note station by Rick Scott Gaverford. Park, park co-station by Rock Comation.
the efforts and, and we were to contribute to our persons and achievements of, and visuals will dig the abilities and-
It is important to continue encouraging individuals with disabilities to realize their abilities in their education, employment, and communities, and reaffirm our commitment to the full inclusion of and equal opportunity for all individuals with disabilities.
Now, therefore, I, Rick Scott, Governor of the State of Florida, do hereby extend greetings and commendations. To, to observing, the, to observing the Disability History Awareness Week, during the two, during the first two weeks of October, and I call on all citizens of Florida to celebrate the many contributions and addition, individuals with disability make, make to Florida and to our nations and to the world. I'm scared.[1329.12][1329.12][applause]
May we have the young people come up for a photo, please?
If I could just, if you could indulge me for just one moment, these students from Fort Pierce Central have been practicing for quite some time to do this reading tonight, and we're very proud of them. I'd also like to recognize Kelsey, while she's here, Kelsey Keebler. She is the national silver medalist in golf, and she won that in the Special Olympics Tournament held in Hilton Head in September, so congratulations to our national winner.[1363.83][1363.83][applause] I'm going to go right over here to have the picture. Okay?[1372.41][1372.41][applause] the schools where they attend, if you would stand, please.[1423.00][1423.00][applause] My sincere thanks to the students from Best Buddies, we're grateful to them, we're grateful to the sponsors that have been here, as well as their teachers, administrators, and their parents tonight. Also tonight, we're very pleased to have with us members of the Pilot Club of Fort Pierce. I would like to call on Lisa Kitts-Miller, our program specialist for transition, and she would come to the podium and recognize the club and the wonderful work they have done to support our students with disabilities throughout the years. Lisa?
I would like to recognize Michelle Segman, who's president of the Pilot Club of Fort Pierce, Jan Smith, who's the Florida District South Region District Lieutenant Governor, Sue Knoll, who is a member, and Bonnie Meyer Hicks, who is the treasurer of the club. The Pilot Club of Fort Pierce has awarded the St. Lucy County Exceptional Student Education Department grants for the past thirteen years. They have given us over thirty thousand dollars over the years. Each year, the grant monies have been used to help students with cognitive disabilities to become more independent, access their community, and learn social and job skills that will give the students a competitive edge in employment. The local Pilot Club of Fort Pierce is a small club, but the members work very hard each year to provide funds for projects that help students to learn skills they need for transition from school to work. In fact, the ladies are on their way to a buncow group as soon as they leave here.[1534.87][1534.87][laughter] This year, the monies from the fifteen hundred dollar grant project will be used to build the Best Buddies Program at Fort Pierce Central High School. The Best Buddies would like to expand the program this year to one more high school in St. Lucy County. This past year, the Pilot Club members have attended several of the events with the Best Buddies Program, and from what I hear, had a really good time. The funds will also be used to buy connector tickets for our local bus, for the students to be able to learn travel training that will allow the students to be more independent and utilize the transportation that is available within the county. The Pilot Club members also recognize an outstanding student each quarter throughout the school year. A student is selected for the Pilot Club Outstanding Student Award. The Pilot Club members sponsor a recognition celebration for the students and give each student a certificate of recognition. This event is quite popular with the students, teachers, and parents, as they get to applaud the students' accomplishments. We thank the Pilot Club of Fort Pierce for their diligence and always being there when we need them. Thank you so much.[1599.25][1599.25][applause] Thank you. Thank you.
It's old fashioned. It's okay, because this is the only time I ever use it, because I never want to get caught having my computer taken away.
I just want, Janice, did you, did we get to recognize you now for the parents of Kelsey Keebler? She was here. These are her parents, if they could stand as well.[1656.25][1656.25][applause]
Thank you, Mr. Thomason, we appreciate your presentation, and thank you Pilot Club for all that you do. It certainly takes a village to raise a child, and we thank you for helping us out here.
And now I'd like for Dr. Kevin Perry and Ms. Michelle Jerger to come up. We want to recognize the following employees, Martha Underwood from our volunteer department, Rachel Jackson, volunteer department, Sabrina Young, transportation, Corey Moses, transportation, Frank DiMarzio, IT, Jose Vega, maintenance, and Maria Colle Omaes, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Perry to, and Ms. Jerger. But those folks, if I called your name, come on up.
Madam Chair, school board members, Ms. Gent, each month, we set aside a special time to recognize some of our dynamic team members here in St. Lucy Public School, and at this time, Ms. Jerger will join me as we present our first Star Award.
Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Gent, good evening. Tonight's star recipient is someone that many of us know, and she's been in our district for quite a few years. She started working in St. Lucy Public Schools in nineteen eighty-one, and she served our families for thirty-one years before she retired in two thousand twelve. But thirty-one years was just not enough for her. She still had more to give, and decided that she would come back and bring more people who had the same spirit to serve. In two thousand fourteen, Ms. Martha Underwood came out of retirement and joined St. Lucy Public Schools as our volunteer coordinator. For those of you who have had the pleasure of meeting Ms. Underwood, you know that she is a lovely woman who always has a smile and kind words to share. One of our volunteer applicants said it best on one of the customer service information cards. She says, "Ms. Underwood is the most pleasant person I've had the opportunity to speak with ever. She is an asset to your org- to speak with ever. She is an asset to your organization. The compassion, patience, and unselfish actions that you show to people is an inspiration." Tonight, we present Ms. Martha Underwood a Star Award to let her know that her work has not gone unnoticed.
Representing our Transportation Department is Ms. Sabrina Young. Would you please come forward? Sabrina Young shows great care for the children she transports to and from school, and is dedicated to ensuring that young riders are safe and secure at all times. Earlier this year, Ms. Young waited with the student at a bus stop until her parents arrived so that the child would not be left in the pouring rainstorm. She went above and beyond expectations of her duty to ensure that the child was safe and also dry. She was celebrated for her act of kindness, too, and for ensuring the safety of this child. Ms. Sabrina Young. Corey Moses. The safety of children is a primary concern to St. Lucy Public Schools. Mr. Moses helped support this expectation, as you will recognize from the comment from one of our parents. "My son goes to Forest Grove due to an invitation for a program offered there. We are not zoned for that school. Thankfully, transportation is provided for my son for that program. My husband and I thought long and hard about allowing our son to attend the school, knowing the distance that he would travel daily. The past few weeks have become so thankful for Mr. Moses on bus twenty-four forty-five. He is a very thoughtful driver, and he takes great pride in his career. He always waves in the morning as well as in the evening with a smile on his face. We have since become very comfortable to know that our son is in safe, good hands on his daily rides with Mr. Moses." From our Volunteer Department, Ms. Rachel Jackson. Ms. Jackson has organized a group of educational mentors known as S-A-I-L, S-A-I-L, Students Artfully Instructed with Love. This is a group of community members from faith-based organizations who volunteer and support students and teachers with over two hundred and fifty volunteer hours per month, ranging from classroom support to school-wide event support, with initial support impacting two schools, starting with Mariposa Elementary. The effort has grown so that we now benefit from volunteer services in five schools, with more waiting in the wings. Ms. Jackson's army of volunteers participates in monthly training, including mentoring skills and reading skills, so they can meet the differentiated needs of all our students. Ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Jackson. From our Maintenance Department, Jose Vega. Working as a team is vital to the success of an organization, and having team members with wide skill sets, the professional capacity to cross-train, and a heart for customer service is a true gift. Tonight, we celebrate Jose Vega, a valued member of our maintenance team who demonstrates these qualities and has been a tremendous support to St. Lucy Public Schools over the past weeks in the absence of our Energy Manager, Jose Vega. And finally, from our Child Nutrition Department, keeping us all healthy, is Maria Corrello Omaes. Maria is a new cafeteria manager at Chester A. Moore. She is a new manager. She has tremendous capacity to demonstrate refined skills in organization and customer service. She truly is impacting our serve philosophy. Every customer, every time receives the best service, as well as a wholesome and nutritious meal. Not able to join us tonight is Mr. Frank DiMarzio, also, from our IT Department. Frank is indispensable, highly trained, and patient technician who is recognized for his dedication and efforts for going beyond the call of duty. Ladies and gentlemen, let's celebrate all of our Star Award recipients.
We certainly are grateful to acknowledge all of our support staff that has been on it with the Star Award. Without you, it would be a whole difference around the schools, and without your exceptional work, we wouldn't be who we are today as a school district. Thank you again. At this time, we're going to have CTA reports. Ms. Rodriguez.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Ms. Jen. I listened with interest to your conversation this morning at the workshop meeting. First, I'd like to add the union's voice to the many voices throughout the state that are dismayed with the state's wrong-headed intent to forge ahead with assigning school grades, teacher effectiveness, and student proficiency based on the FSA tests that were given last year. As a quick recap, it was a debacle. That's it. Everyone in this state knows it, from the students who took the tests, the parents who objected to the tests while they were being given, to the teachers and district personnel who tried to make it all work, as we always do, to the State Department of Education, and to the state legislature. Everyone knows. So regardless of what they try and say about how these tests should and could be used, we can't and we shouldn't. With that said, I'd like to mention an opportunity for all of those folks I mentioned before to act collectively with one voice in unison at the start of the legislative session in January, because that's the only place that this disaster is going to get fixed. On January fourteenth, we will be taking our desire to take back our schools, our Florida, and our future to the Capitol steps. Our plans are in the works, and we'd like to flood our Capitol with education employees and supporters of public education at a rally in Tallahassee. We're fortunate that the legislative session starts early and it doesn't impact testing that it usually does, and education employees can actually go to Tallahassee. The state CT, excuse me, the state FEA and the St. Lucy CTA CU would like to save you a seat on our bus. All of us together, board members, district staff, teachers, parents, our children, and community members. I know I can count on all of you to help fill that bus and join buses of similar, like-minded supporters from every county in this state who will be doing the same. Hopefully, I can count on your support. Don't let, I won't forget to continue to ask you, either. On a more local level, I also wanted to address something else you discussed this morning. Troy talked about a system-wide bureaucracy and paperwork that keeps teachers from getting down to the real work of planning. He was right on the money. He also said that new teachers feel overburdened, overworked, and confused. He's right about that, too, even though I can tell you it's not just the new ones that feel that way. In fact, we have teachers every day that tell us about the hoops they have to jump through, worksheets, if you will, that they have to fill out as part of what is being called collaborative planning. I agree in principle with what Mr. Jen said this morning about collaborative planning flourishing in a culture where principals make time for teachers to work together and share. I disagree that that is what is happening in the forced meetings being called collaborative planning, going on during, daily during teachers' planning times in many schools in this district. More often, I hear of an agenda created by someone who is not a classroom teacher, and a list of things that teachers need to do, often on their own time and after work hours. Teachers tell us that the real collaborative planning, as Mr. Jen describes, is when teachers are out from the burden of those things and can work together in groups that they facilitate and self-direct. I know I'm at odds with the district leadership on this because we don't agree on what constitutes collaborative planning and what role the facilitators play, but I'm telling you the truth from the field. I'm trying to speak truth to power. I wish more than anything that you could have been in our office last week when we brought in groups of teachers, over sixty, throughout the afternoon and evening by school level, and asked open-ended questions about things like planning time, lesson plans, and what tools teachers need to do their jobs. Real, raw, honest reports of what they do to jump through the hoops while trying to get their real work done. Teachers must have the flexibility and creativity to work together using the skills that they have to critically review data, yes, but also to think about lessons, reading selections, and individual student needs. Too often now, I am hearing of teachers being given canned lesson plans by administration or coaches and being told just to teach what is on the plan. It's really not that simple. It's not as simple as click here and you teach. That's not what's really happening. Too often, I am given copies of multi-page worksheets that administrators are giving out so teachers can transfer data from the computer screen to a piece of paper and turn them into administrators. Too often, I'm seeing teachers giving up on being a professional educator in this district because they are not being treated like a professional with the autonomy to decide what they need to do and how they should do it. With all the talk of differentiation for students, we have forgotten that we need to differentiate for teachers, too. They're not all the same. With performance comes flexibility. You said that, Mr. Jen, and I agree with you. That really resonated with me this morning. That's really all teachers are asking for. So here's my analogy. It's like we're asking teachers to be triathlon competitors. Some of them already come to us in perfect shape. They're ready. They could run the distance. Some will come to that point with a little training and some practice and some support, and with some, there's a lot of work to do before they can really run the race and finish. But it's not that simple in our district for some reason, because all of these competitors, regardless of their innate ability to run the race, their practice, their training, what we do, what we give them, how much we spend time with them, who mentors them, what coaching we give them, we saddle them with bikes that are under-inflated. They have to swim the ten miles with a sweat suit on, and they have to run and carry a twenty-five pound weight with them. That's how it feels. So even though they may have trained and be ready for the race, we put all this other stuff that makes the race itself really difficult. So if the district could just help people by thinking about how to inflate those tires for them before they have to ride that bike ten miles, and let them just wear their swimsuit instead of all this other stuff dragging behind them as they try and swim, and if they could either help carry that twenty-five pound weight or just give them the freedom to put it down, we would all end up, at the end of the race, winners. The teachers, the schools, and most importantly, the kids. I appreciate my opportunity to speak in front of you. Please, let our teachers have a competitive edge, because the things that we're asking them to do are holding us back. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. We have CWA reports tonight. Do we have any this evening? Ms. Vickers?
Okay. Seeing none, we will move forward with our consent agenda. Fellow board members, we have the agenda before us. It's seven point one through sixteen point five. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Second.
So moved by Ms. Hensley and second by Mr. Inglesall. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Board members, do you have any conflicts that you would declare on any of the items that are coming before us this evening? Hearing none, Superintendent Jen, may we receive your recommendations?
Recommend approval of the consent agenda as submitted.
Board members, we've received the recommendation. Are there any items you wish to comment on or to discuss? Hearing none, we have received the recommendations. May I have a motion, please? Moved by Ms. Harley? Second by Ms. Hensley. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries five zero again here. Superintendent Jen, we are now ready for a review of the Florida's Accountability System Resolution, and directly after, we will hear superintendent and staff reports.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. What I have before you is a call for the review of Florida's Accountability System Resolution, whereas accountability and high standards are supported as part of a quality, rigorous curriculum for Florida students, and whereas the St. Lucy Public Schools has an obligation to its students, professional educators, parents, and community to accurately measure student achievement using unwavering, valid, and reliable tools, and whereas Florida's ongoing modifications to its system of accountability have eroded the fidelity of the system, and whereas Florida's Accountability System is presently based on a flawed and incomplete process which results in flawed and incomplete school grades, and whereas the rushed implementation and application of the data does not comply with state law to calculate proficiency and growth measures resulting in actions that shortchange students and professional educators in achievement results, and whereas the state-sponsored validity study of the Florida Standards Assessment is under fire based on questionable interpretations of findings, and whereas on September twenty-fifth, twenty fifteen, the Florida Association of District School Superintendents publicly stated a lack of confidence in Florida's current Accountability System. Now therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of St. Lucy County, Florida, does, and it hereby extends the call to action for all concerned educators, parents, and community members to share their views and require the state to pause, conduct a comprehensive review of the Accountability System, and remedy its flaws, return Florida to its status of a national leader in quality education and Accountability Systems, and support the bill that amends Statute one oh eight point three four, Florida statutes relating to school grades.
Board members, I would ask you at this time for us to receive a vote to accept the resolution. So moved by Ms. Hensley? Second by Ms. Hilson. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. We will have Ms. Hensley later on when she gives her report. In fact, after Superintendent, we will have Ms. Hensley give us a little bit more covering on that.
Dr. Mills, we have two new assistant principals. We have Ashia Barea, who will be Assistant Principal at Fort Pierce Central High School. Is she here? Please stand and recognize her. It looks like you brought a fan club, so if members of your family would stand as well, it's great that they came out for you tonight. And also Assistant Principal at Port St. Lucy High School, Tamar Belgraves. Myrna, I pronounced it backwards, over in the corner. I'm sorry, Myrna, I got that backwards, and I've already heard great things about her and her relationships with students and her efficacy with kids, and so congratulations to her as well, and we welcome you to the administrative field, and are expecting great things from both of you. Thank you. And then one last announcement to the board, and it may be brought up in a little while, regarding Lights On After School, which is a nationwide event that we celebrate after-school programs and the important role they play in the lives of our students and our community and families as well, and that's going to be happening on October twenty-second in Fort Pierce. It will be at the Powell Center, and in Port St. Lucy, it will be at the Civic Center in Port St. Lucy. Community Center. There's no Civic Center in Port St. Lucy? Okay, the Community Center. My first mistake after three and a half months. I apologize. Community Center. That concludes my remarks.
And of course, we're asking everybody to come out to that event to support the after-school programs that will be there. Ms. Hensley, at this time, we're asking you to please cover our stand on that two thousand fourteen, fifteen state assessment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, we all received from the School Board Association a draft resolution, which they will be voting on this week in St. Petersburg, to take a stand regarding the Assessment and Accountability System. Yesterday, we spoke, talked about it at length at our five-county workgroup meeting, and the resolution that you have received very much mirrors, but not exactly the same wording, of what the superintendent has read. They are willing to take a stand. We talked about this at the Board of Directors' meeting, that School Board Association need to craft a resolution that we could all buy into, so that we are speaking with one voice. So you have that in front of you. I am going to give a report after the meeting tonight to the new executive director on where we stand on this issue. As we've already taken a vote on the superintendent's resolution, I can't imagine that we don't have consensus on this resolution. But if there are any questions, I'll be glad to entertain those questions. Otherwise, I will let them know that we are in support of the School Board Association taking a very strong stand. The other thing you have in front of you is a platform proposal, which is- The other thing you have in front of you is a platform proposal, which is brand-new. It has to do with the possibility of mending the Florida Constitution to provide for a Commissioner of Education that is elected by a statewide election. It will serve as a member of the Cabinet of Florida, and the governor and members of the cabinet will serve at the State Board of Education. There is concern that we do not have direct accountability to elected officials, and this would give our State Board of Education be 100% elected. So if you have any questions on that, I'm looking for a bunch of head nods to let them know that we think this is a good idea for a conversation. Okay? Thank you very much. And if I may, who was the rest of my report?
Yes, please.
The superintendent mentioned Lights on After School. Ms. Harrison will be, I guess, finding out where we're going to be, so everybody can be someplace on that night. It's two different places, and I think it's important that we have been asked to show up and just listen to what people are saying, so that we can hear the concerns for the after-school programs, or any, as well as kudos if we can hear those. And another thing that is coming out is that we did free rides on community transit for all of our students during the summer. It was so well-received that there is now a pilot project for the rest of this year that if you're under 18 and you have either a library card or school ID, you can ride community transit for free, and we're going to keep track of the numbers towards the end of the year, and we're going to use that, hopefully, to petition for funding to keep that as a permanent thing, so our kids have accessibility to libraries and home after school, or wherever that might be. So I think that's a very positive thing that we have been working on for a few years as a transportation organization, and that is going to, we hope, serve our students very, very well, and give them great flexibility and mobility within our community.
And I think, right now, we should give the Transportation Department a big hand for providing that for our young people. I know that my son personally took advantage of that during the summertime, and he went back and forth to the mall without mom having to take him, and so I think that is really exciting news, that our young people can travel over the community now. Gives them something to do. They can just hop on the bus and go to the movies, and go, you know, to their friend's house, and what have you, and I think that is just wonderful, because they're not stuck in one place now, and the parents are relieved.
And if I may, with, starting next week, there will be new fixed routes, so we will have the ability for somebody to get on the community transit bus on one of their local stops, and he has to go clear down all the way down to West Palm with a couple of bus changes, or up to Indian River County to their mall and do different things. So we're trying to create a system where our students, as well as their families, have an opportunity for increased mobility.
Wonderful news. Thank you, Ms. Hensley. Before we go on with our board member reports, I did not ask Attorney Harold if he had any comments. Okay, thank you. Well, we're going to go right to Ms. Hilsen.
We all enjoyed the JAG Challenge at Port St. Lucie High School, those of us that were able to attend. It was lots of fun, lots of voting going on, quite a bit of confusion, but the kids didn't notice that the judges were confused. We had a great time, and they did a really good job. I just wanted to mention, as a board member of the Early Learning Coalition, I'm putting together a letter with the inclusion portion of the Early Learning Coalition. They have another section. We have nonprofit people from the community that come. Every area is representative in this inclusion process with the Early Learning Coalition, and what I'm trying to do is craft a letter to be given out. We have over 100 private, public, I guess, nonprofit, for-profit childcare centers with literally hundreds of children in the community, and the problem that we have found, directors' staff have found within the community, is because the state didn't expand Medicaid, we have many, many children that are literally falling off the ability to have occupational speech therapy, physical therapy. The therapists are simply not serving the children, because they're simply not being paid, other than CMS, and then recently, we found out CMS is getting ready to cap what they're doing, which leaves us with many, many privatized companies through the state, which sometimes pay, sometimes do not. But we're in a real crisis, so what I've asked is to get the mommy power and get our parents at the centers involved and to speak out and say, you know, my child does deserve services, and we all know, in this group, that the earlier that we do intervention, the more effective we'll see his children perform academically throughout the years, and so it's really important. So we are moving forward with that, and we will continue, we will continue to fight for services for children. I think it's very appropriate, in the month of October, that we should do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hilsen. Ms. Harley? No report. Okay, Mr. Inglesall.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to step back and somewhat talk about what Ms. Rodriguez said this morning. And we were just evaluating some of the things in St. Lucie County, and I was casting my vision, and we were all, we're coming up with different viewpoints of what we were looking at, but I really, first off, want to thank Mr. Gent. He's an answer to prayer, and in the respect of, when I was talking to Mr. Hughie, and what I was looking for in a superintendent was someone that was going to bring a system-wide approach to St. Lucie County, and be able to change the culture, too. And it doesn't, and it takes time to do that, and to put these systems in place will take time, too. And what I was talking about is with the bureaucracy of today, and what teachers have to put on the boards, and what administrators have to go through, is basically, and Ms. Rodriguez made me sound very eloquent, but it is like dragging, you know, a 25-pound ball, and we do need to alleviate ways that we can help new teachers and all teachers use their time more effectively. And Dr. Wilde has been tasked with this, and I appreciate her sharing today some of the things that they are working on, but most importantly, what Mr. Gent said, and what board members do, is when we're out in public, please come and talk to us. Administrators, too, you've come and shared your viewpoints and your concerns with the school district, but Mr. Gent, when he goes out, and he's told us within the next few months, he's going to try to hit all our schools, to go out and share your concerns with them. He's a man of integrity, and you've got to think, since we've been on the board, the majority of us here, we've had WOW, we've had Marzano, we've had, you know, and I don't want to say Kids at Hope, but it's still here, but you have all these philosophies and trainings that teachers are like, okay, 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 and that's just within the eight to 10 years that I've been on the board. What we're trying to do now is really, really give Kids at Hope a kick by really focusing on education, putting the power back into teachers, and it's going to take time. It's going to take education, it's going to take support from the district staff, and I feel with Mr. Gent and his staff and his leadership with Dr. Prince, that we can get there, that the culture is going to change. I can sense this culture is already changing, just here at the district office and in some of the schools. We do have to make some more changes. We have to make, we always have to evaluate everything we do and ask, why are we doing this, and how is it going to benefit the children? Whatever decision you're making at your school, why are we changing this? Why are we doing this? Or, you know, even some of the things that you're used to doing. You know, we do this in our business all the time. Reevaluate, reevaluate, reevaluate. Is it really our mission and our focus of our organization? And hopefully, administrators and teachers, that you guys will have real conversations with each other and sharing with Mr. Gent.
Thank you, Mr. Inglesall, and I'm sure we all agree with everything that you said there. Also, Ms. Rodriguez, with your statements tonight, one of the things that I remember we mentioned at our work session, in fact, Mr. Gent mentioned it, is that we want to include CTA with our conversations for teachers, and that's part of the climate change around here, and so I'm thankful that, Mr. Gent, that you see out of those eyes and understand the importance of including our union representatives, along with what we want to do to move forward. We also have started a speakers bureau at Westwood. We've chosen Westwood to have it, but we have our media school channel that is recording the speakers, and so please tune in to our school channel and get an opportunity to hear the people that will be coming into Westwood. We want all of the schools and all of the students to be able to hear these speakers, and that is why we've put it on the media, because they're very motivational, and they're telling their story. That's what they're coming in to do. So they're being very open about what it was like for them, and as young people, to grow up as teenagers, to grow up, and into adulthood, and the challenges that they've had. And just those young people that came from Treasure Coast High School lets us know how important that is, that young people can hear from those of us that have already gone through life, and we're still traveling, but we want them to be able to hear the stories, the real-life stories of what many of us have been through, and how we have made certain decisions that have brought us into success. Most of our speakers at Westwood will be males, and already, we've gotten, we're just about booked for the whole year with the speakers. We will have two each time, and so you get to hear two different people, and all the last month, Mr. Gent was our first speaker, and myself, and you'll see that on our channel. So we've started the program. We have eight months of this at Westwood, and we just want to encourage all of our children and our parents through this, because all of them, parents will be watching as well and being inspired within our community. We've got some great people coming, and so we're very excited about that program. At this time, seeing that there are no unscheduled speakers, we will end with a reminder of our St. Lucie County Public School Mission Statement. The mission of St. Lucie County Schools is to ensure that all of our children graduate from safe and caring schools, equipped with the knowledge, the skills, and the desire to succeed. With all minds clear, our next board meeting will be October 27th, and it will be our board regular workshop meeting. At this time, we conclude the meeting this evening, and we hope that all of you have a restful evening. Thank you for coming. We are adjourned.